The May 14th, 2020 City Council Meeting for Longview is now called to order. Tonight's meeting is being conducted via teleconference. We thank you for your understanding. Due to our format of this meeting, we will begin tonight with a roll call to confirm all members of the City Council are present and able to participate in our considerations. Councilmembers, when I call your name in District, will you please respond and affirm it if you are present? Ed Moore, District 1. Ed Moore, District 1.
Here now.
Thank you. Nona Snotty, District 2.
Here.
Ray Wade, District 3.
Here.
Kristen Ishihara, District 4.
I'm here.
David Wright, District 5.
Here.
Steve Pirtle, District 6.
Here.
And now a roll call for City staff. City Manager Keith Bonds.
Here.
City Attorney Jim Finley.
Here.
City Secretary Andy Shepherd.
Here.
Thank you all for being here and for your attendance tonight. We have now come to the citizen comment portion of our meeting. Those wishing to participate in citizen comment tonight are invited to access this meeting through a link to register with the teleconference and applications. Sean Herr, the city's media and tourism manager, will moderate the citizen comment portion of our meeting. Your call to speak will be unmuted and given one opportunity to speak for a maximum of three minutes. Please begin by stating your name and address for the public record. Sean, do we have any citizens tonight that want to speak?
We do have several citizens that have logged into the system. We do ask that if you would like to speak, go ahead and raise your hand. There are two that have so far raised their hand. I'll also call some other names later. We're going to start with Jeremiah Hunter. If you would, please state your name and address. I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. You may need to unmute yourself as well. Again, starting with Jeremiah Hunter. Jeremiah Hunter. All right, we'll try to come back to Jeremiah in just a moment. Let's see, we'll go to the next person who has a raised hand, and that is Rami Pirdham. Rami, can you hear us? Okay. Don't seem to be having any luck with them at the moment. What we could do is see if we can get back in touch with them. There are several others that are also on, and let's see. Jeremiah has just responded that he's been, he's given microphone access now, so I'm going to go back to him just a moment. All right, Jeremiah, you've been unmuted. Can you, can we hear you now, Jeremiah?
Yes, this is Jeremiah Hunter. Can I be heard?
You can.
Okay, very good. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Address 314 East Twilight Drive. I've been a Longview resident for 11 years. I wanted to address Agenda Item 7, which is the calculation of the tax rate. I want, based, I just heard about this, so I've only had a few minutes to look it over, but my understanding is that the tax rate that, or there's a, sorry, in the calculation of the tax rate, that the, the officer responsible for that may be looking to calculate it in such a way that would be over the currently allowed rate that, that does not require voter approval as passed by SB 2 this past state legislative session. That, I'm urging the council to make sure that tax rates are not raised one bit during this COVID-19 crisis, whatever anybody thinks about it. The reality is that incomes are going to be flat, if not drop. The city needs to adopt a budget and, and of course, an according tax rate that does not raise, does not seek to raise any revenue, does not seek to increase taxes of any sort, whether that be dollar amount or tax rates at all. If anything, the tax rates and the budgets, the spending requests need to be dropped because of the extreme uncertainty that we'll be facing with the future here, because of all the economic uncertainty. So I'm urging the council and the associated people that are going to be putting the budget together, do not, do not, do not seek any measure to raise the tax rate, even with all the carve-outs and exceptions afforded the city via the SB 2 language. It would be, it would just be, without seeking to be too extreme, it would be absolutely unconscionable for the city to raise taxes at all during a time when a lot of people are out of work and, and everyone else even that has jobs still doesn't really, the future is extremely uncertain, and so the city needs to make sure to not increase taxes one bit, don't even consider it. I would remind some of the council members that one, one seat is up in November, and then the mayor and two other seats are up in March. If you raise taxes this summer, I have a feeling the voters will not be happy about that at all, and you might see the reflections of that come November and next May. So don't, don't do it. There's going to be people watching you. Thank you for your time.
That was Jeremiah Hunter. We also have, let's see, I'm trying to begin with, let's see, Rami Pirdham.
Hello, this is Rami Pirdham. Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Thank you. This is Rami Pirdham at 1919 Blue Ridge Parkway, and I'm calling to express my concerns about, again, Agenda Item Number 7, as the previous speaker spoke about. I am frustrated and deeply concerned that the council would even consider raising tax rates at a time when citizens have difficulty protesting or even contacting council members about finding information about this tax increase. I find it also further irresponsible that the city council has elected to do what it can do instead of what it should do at this time. Raising taxes on citizens while they're coping with the crisis is wholly irresponsible. And as the previous speaker spoke, that will be reflected in future elections. Citizens will not forget this attempt. Already rents and taxes have been raised on property values, making it more difficult for citizens to make ends meet each month. I understand the city has priorities to accomplish. I also understand the city also cast a large financial bond measure recently. The council needs to understand that these burdens all fall upon the citizens of this city. I hope that they keep that in mind, and I would like for them to not consider at this point and any time in the future, making an end run around voter-approved tax increases. That is all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We, there are several other people that have, like I said, logged on, but I don't see anyone else that has raised their hand. I would encourage them to do so, or they can send a chat if they have not done so, because there are several people that can log on but may not wish to speak. So again, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand. And if you'd like to continue the meeting, it'd be okay to, with you, you can return to this item if anybody raises their hand here shortly or sends us a chat.
Just order speakers right now. Sean, we're going to move on, okay?
Okay, thank you.
You monitor and let us know, okay?
Perfect.
Okay, we're now to close some items. Presentation of proclamation designated May 17th to May 23rd is National Emergency Medical Service Week, whereas the Longview Fire Department has requested by the mayor by proclamation, recognize May 17th to 23rd as Emergency Medical Services Week, City of Longview, and whereas emergency medical service professionals on the front line of COVID-19 crisis planning and responding every day to take care of their citizens and community. EMS system consists of emergency physicians, nurses, medical technicians, paramedics, educators, and administrators, and others joining, others joining together to care for our community. This year's theme is EMS Strong. Ready today, prepare for tomorrow. It's an appro, it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical service providers, so now therefore I, Andy Mack, with authority vested me as Mayor, City of Longview, do proclaim, May 17th to 23rd is Emergency Medical Services Week in Longview. I just want to say to all of our EMS personnel and those on the front lines, your, your service will never be forgotten, and you will never hear enough thanks for what you do. We cannot even fathom the, the things that you go through on a daily basis, and we thank you for your service, and you do so with a, with a heart for the community. So my appreciation, I know the citizens appreciate you, and you deserve more than just a proclamation written, you know, designated Emergency Medical Services Week. You all deserve medals and gold stars, so thank you all very, very much. We are now to election item. We'll move to our presentation oath of office to council member-elect of District Number 4, City Secretary Andy Shepherd, will diminish the oath of office to Kristen Ishihara, and we have a video of that.
If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Kristen Ishihara.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City Council.
Of City Council.
Of the City of Longview.
Of the City of Longview.
And the State of Texas.
And the State of Texas.
And will.
And will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state.
And of the state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Congratulations, Kristen. Do you have anything you'd like to say tonight?
Uh, thanks, Andy. I do not have anything to add. I am humbled and grateful to be starting my third and final term as a city council member, and will do my very best to continue to represent the citizens of our great city.
You have done so with grace and poise, and we appreciate your service, Kristen, and look forward to working with you for the next few years on your council, as on the council. Thank you so much for your willingness and your desire to serve this community. You're doing a fantastic job. We are now to consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda we consider together unless there's any item council members would wish to pull off for separate discussion. If so, please indicate so at this time.
Move to approve.
A motion?
Second.
Who, who, who made the motion?
I did, Andy, Dave Wright.
Thank you, David. Who made the second?
Steve.
Okay, first and second, we're now to back the roll call vote. Last, the council member to, in turn, for their vote, please indicate by saying yes or no. Ed Moore, District 1?
Yes.
Nona Snotty, District 2?
Yes.
Ray Wade, District 3?
Yes.
Kristen Ishihara, District 4?
Yes.
David Wright, District 5?
Yes.
Steve Pirtle, District 6?
Yes.
And I'm Mayor Andy Mack. Vote yes. Ms. City Secretary, would you please confirm the record of the vote?
Yes, I will. Motion was made by Councilmember Dave Wright, seconded by Steve Pirtle. Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. We'll now move to our budget item. Consider resolution directing the finance director to calculate the 2020 voter-approved tax rate for City of Longview in a manner provided for a special taxing unit. Ms. Cohen.
Thank you, and good evening. In 2019, the Texas Legislature passed Senate Bill 2, which created a property revenue tax cap for municipalities. The bill includes a no new revenue calculation by which cities are limited to increase revenue by a maximum of 3.5% as compared to the no new revenue amount. If the city chooses to go above the 3.5% limit, voter approval is required. Previous to this legislation, cities operated under different limitations which capped new revenue at 8% without voter approval. Senate Bill 2 included a provision that allows cities to return to the 8% cap for a limited period of time in the event of a disaster declaration. It is important to note this action would not directly increase the tax rate at this time, or necessarily increase the tax rate for this upcoming budget or future budget. Staff is bringing this option forward to council to consider so that you would have the flexibility to react if the financial impact is substantial from this current disaster. Our normal budgeting procedure in Longview has been to only change the total tax rate for voter-approved debt. With this in mind, we normally set the total tax rate and then determine the property revenue as a calculation of appraised value. In the event that appraised values fall significantly next year due to the current economic situation, our property tax revenue would also decline if we left the tax rate the same as we normally do. Obviously, this would have an impact on our next year's budget. But where the 3.5% limit could come into play is in subsequent budgets. Assuming we don't change our tax rate, when and if property values recover, the no new revenue calculation could cause our property tax revenue to recover more slowly as it would be limited to the 3.5% cap. Our goal with this would not be to create undue burden on our taxpayers, but instead to provide council with the flexibility to recover revenue back to pre-disaster levels if and when appraised values fluctuate due to this disaster. Also, I would like to note that we would continue to make sure that we understand the statute correctly and are applying the exception appropriately. Moving forward, we would, we would continue to be in consultation to ensure we follow all appropriate laws and regulations. And I can answer any questions at this time.
Ms. Cohen, I appreciate you. Council, before we get into discussion, I want to just make a few comments real quickly. I think everybody needs to understand where this is coming from and where we are. I'm not trying to show you one way or the other. I'm just going to provide some information. First, let me begin by saying to all the citizens of Longview, we have never discussed a tax increase. I'm not really sure where that has come from. We are not discussing a tax increase whatsoever. Yeah, these rollback taxes, they were originally set at 5% in 1979. They were increased to 8% in 1981 due to inflation. To my knowledge, no one has ever complained about the way it was at 8% back until 1981. I've been on the council nine years, plus five years, and then 10 years in between. That's a long time, and I don't ever remember anyone complaining about the way it was before SB 2 and HB 2 came in and took away what I consider the local control to the cities. Because they, they, the concern that we had when HB 2 and SB 2 were being proposed was that your city government would lose local control over your money, the citizens of Longview money, because we would no longer be able to, we wouldn't be held accountable for it. The state would be. And, and I've always been under the impression that I want to be accountable to citizens of Longview for your tax dollars and the, and the way we spend it. And the way I've always looked at that is, you know, if, if you, just like the two speakers that spoke, if you don't like the way we're spending your money, you vote us out, because that's what you're supposed to do. And in Longview, we have 35-plus thousand registered voters, but on a good year, on a good election, a contested big election, you might have 8,000 people vote, maybe 9,000. So if you and 4,000 of your friends decide you don't like the way we spend your money, you can, you can vote us out of there. But when the state controls your money, there are 16 million registered voters in the state of Texas, so you need to have about little over 8 million friends to be able to change that one. So I've always been a proponent of local control, just because we're more accountable to the citizens of Longview to make sure we are spending your money correctly. But I have absolutely no intentions of raising taxes on this community. We will find a way to, to get through this budget cycle that we're going to be faced with, with the lower sales tax revenues. We will find ways to, to make it right, because that's what we do. We've already started that process. This is nothing more than putting it back to the way it's been for years and years, and like I say, I don't remember anybody ever complaining about it the way it was. We're not proposing any kind of an increased tax in my, as far as I'm concerned. So I'm just bringing you all information that I have, that I want you to know. Please, let's discuss this and, and see what your concerns are, council. Please, I need you to do this one at a time. If you have, if you'd like to say something, because we can't see each other, so I can't tell who's nodding at me. So I will just, I will just, gonna go around the room and just ask. Is that, is that okay with council members?
Sure.
Mr. Moore, would you like to speak on this matter?
Just briefly, Mayor, I, I agree with you 100% that I have, I have always been in favor of as much local control as possible. This item just gives us the flexibility in this time of crisis to do what may be necessary. However, I have received quite a bit of input today, almost all of it negative, asking us to, to not approve this. I told every one of these individuals that when it comes time to vote on next year's tax rate later this summer, I, I, I will vote not to raise the tax rate at all. I can, I can promise the constituents that. Having said that, though, and, and hearing the, the, the input that, that I've gotten today, I am, I am now leaning to, to, to not approve this resolution. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Snotty?
Very well said, Mayor Mack, very eloquently put. I, too, my, my biggest concern is the tax increase, but as you just said, if I understood, that we will not be looking at a tax increase, and if I'm incorrect, please correct me.
No, you are correct.
So the two people who called in, they were urging us to vote to, to consider the fact that there might be a tax increase. So when would that be, if at all?
Well, we, we will go through our budget cycle, as I've already started that with, with our city manager. We've already, as we'll discuss something also later in this, in this meeting tonight, how we're going to make up, make up our deficits, and, you know, if, if, if we had to dip into reserve fund to keep from raising taxes, we would have to vote to do that as a council. But I just, I don't, I'm not sure why everyone's jumping to the conclusion we're going to raise taxes, because we don't know what the final numbers are going to be yet, but we'll find, we'll do everything we can to not raise taxes and continue to provide the services the citizens of Longview expect and deserve out of our council, out of our, out of our city government, so.
Okay, so the resolution gives us the flexibility to do what?
It gets it, it just puts us back where we used to be.
Okay.
Which is, you know, when we, when HB 2 and SB 2 were being proposed, I know Judge Stout and myself both wrote letters to Governor Abbott, because we were totally against HB 2 and SB 2, because it removed local control from city government. It just, it removed it from us, and it made it where we weren't able to do things necessary to help our citizens in, if, if we needed to. But, you know, I don't think this is going to affect us either way. We've never gone to 8% before. I mean, we never have. We, I don't know, I don't know, it's just an arbitrary number, I get it, but we've never gone there. I see no reason that we're going to go there. It just puts us back where we were before they approved SB 2 and HB 2, and, but realize this, the only reason they're giving us this option is because of this disaster declaration that we're all going through. So you have to think, if, if the state is giving it back to us, they're doing it for a reason, because they see it might be necessary at some point in time, and I can see this affecting bigger cities a lot more than it's going to ever affect Longview, but I think they're doing that as a safeguard. So, you know, I think whether we do it or don't do it, it's not going to affect Longview either way. We're not going to, we've never encroached upon that before, and I don't think any of us would be in office if we proposed an 8% tax increase.
And I think, Andy, you know, I'm sorry.
No, please.
Amid this crisis, I mean, I, I know that we, as a council, are going to do everything we can within our power to make sure that there is no additional burden on the citizens of Longview. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snotty. Mr. Wade?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, my, my number one concern right now is the fact that we are in the middle of a worldwide pandemic, and locally, our town is increasingly being barred or hampered by COVID-19, and any discussion of any kind of tax fluctuation or tax conversation adds to the stress that our community is already under. Seeing the history of this, everything that you've just spoken, I know we're later going to vote with this, but I feel the timing is just completely off, considering where our community and our nation is, and we should be concerned about our citizens, their mental well-being, their physical, their health well-being, and my personal opinion is the timing is off for this. When it comes time to vote on this, I will just agree to vote against it at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Ms. Ishihara?
Thank you, Mayor Mack, and I appreciate and value so much everyone's comments so far. What I would add to that is that I also received a number of contacts today from constituents who urged me to vote against the resolution, and as I, you know, tried to explain, the way that I understand, the resolution, you know, would just keep our options open and, you know, would allow us to consider it in the future, but that I had no intention of raising the property tax rate. I just struggled a little bit with feeling very political in saying, well, I need to give us the option, but trust me, I'm not going to vote for that. And I feel like that in the economic climate that we are currently in, that several have mentioned, that this is just not the right time to be doing that, like Ray was just saying, that it's my job to respond to the constituents who reached out to me today and said, you know, this is a concern, and there's so much uncertainty at this time, that while I understand all of the reasons and that it may make sense on paper, realistically, I actually, I trust each and every one of us to be true to our word that we would not raise the tax rate when it came time, but we don't know for sure that we're going to be sitting in those seats for the next two years, so we can't say for sure that that's what would happen. And I, I'm just not comfortable at this time opening up that possibility, and then I need to respect those that contacted me today, and I appreciate them very much for doing so. That's, you know, why local control is best, so, I bet, thank you very much for allowing my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Cohen, is there any time limit on the resolution?
Yes, there is. We brought it forward at this point because the budget calendar has to be set, and we had to give direction to the tax collector assessor, so that is why we brought it forward at this time.
Okay, but when would this resolution expire?
It would expire, there's, it has a two-year option, and it's whenever the appraised values reach back to the pre-disaster limit, values.
Okay, well, I understand that this resolution does not call for us to raise taxes at this time, but I just can't imagine, under the circumstances we're under right now, I can't imagine going to any of the local hotels and saying, oh, by the way, we need a property tax increase. I mean, there's businesses that are hurting, there's a lot of individuals that are hurting out there, and personally, I just don't want to even, want this to even be an option for the city to plan and have this, feel like they have this in their back pocket, well, we can always raise taxes if we have to. I don't want that to be an option, and because of that, I, I too will be voting against this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Mr. Pirtle?
Well, I've had numerous calls today also, and they've all been against it. We just received our agenda, I talked to some folks about this earlier, we just received our agenda Monday evening, and we were only able to decipher this for three days, maybe four at the most, and there just wasn't enough time to really understand what was going on. And then, when we, when I started looking into it and started getting all these calls, I realized that we don't need to be here. It's kind of like hitting a man when he's down, you know? We're not going to raise the taxes on somebody when, when they don't have a job, or when they're, when they're in financial straits right now, so I can't support this at all. There, there's no shape, form, or fashion that this would even be a consideration on my, on my part at this time. Thank you.
Council, I appreciate everybody's input. It's valuable to hear all of y'all's insight, and, and I think it's very, very healthy to discuss these things and to know what's going on in our community and how we're going to pursue forward, and I think it's pretty obvious, we all pretty much feel the same way, none of us are looking to, to raise taxes. And once again, I don't think this, this resolution makes or breaks us either way. I don't think- I don't think it has any bearing on what we're going to do. So, and I think we all feel the same way, that it's not, the timing is probably not really good timing, but, you know, something we still had, we had to still discuss it, because it was, it was an option for us. So, if there's no more discussion, if, if there's a motion, we can proceed forward.
I'll make a motion that we not pass the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. The motion was made by Mr. Pirtle, the second was made by Ms. Snoddy.
Andy, Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
Now, the resolution is not to approve the res, this resolution?
Correct, is to deny, to deny the resolution.
Okay.
So, in other words, if you want to deny the resolution, you have to vote yes. If you don't want to deny the resolution, you vote no.
Okay.
Am I correct in that, Mr. Finley?
Wait, repeat that.
The mayor was correct in his statement.
If you want to, to not approve the resolution, you vote yes. If you want to approve the resolution, then you would vote no.
Wait, one more time, please, I'm sorry.
Okay, the, the motion is to, the motion is to not approve the resolution, so if you agree with not approving the resolution, then you vote yes. If you want to approve the resolution, then you would vote no.
The tongue twister.
Is everybody clear?
Yeah.
Okay, the way the motion was made, we have to look at it from that standpoint. Okay, so, Mr. Moore, District One?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Snoddy, District Two?
Yes.
Mr. Wade, Ray Wade, District Three?
Yes.
Chris Ishihara, District Four?
Yes.
David Wright, District Five?
Yes.
Steve Pirtle, District Six?
Yes, not to approve the, not to approve the resolution.
And I'm Mayor Andy Mack, vote yes as well, which, okay, Ms. Sec, Ms. Secretary, would you give us record of the vote, please?
Yes, I will. Motion was made by Steve Pirtle to deny the resolution. It was seconded by Nona Snoddy, and so the resolution fails 7-0.
Correct. You understand, the resolution failed, it did not pass. Is everybody clear with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you all for your, for your time on that, and your interaction on that, counsel. We're now to Act Item A. Certain ordinance authorizing city staff to acquire certain properties located on 1238 and 1240 Eden Drive for massive drainage plant. Mr. McPhee?
Good evening, Mayor. City Council, Mr. Bonds. Tonight, I ask you to consider approval of an ordinance authorizing city staff to acquire certain properties located at 1238 and 1240 Eden Drive, as well as approval of a settlement agreement with the East Eden Homeowners Association for an aggregate amount of $250,500. In September of 2017, city council approved the 2018 Drainage Improvements projects as part of the 2018 Capital Improvements Program, which included this project. The two properties are outlined in cyan on this slide. The photos of this location show the undersized storm drains and property which has experienced repetitive flooding. Once this project was approved, we completed an engineering study to determine the cost of the proposed improvements. The study and report not only indicated that the cost of the proposed improvements would be greater than the values of the existing properties, but it was also determined that construction of the proposed improvements would create additional flooding problems. At this time, we decided to pursue purchasing the properties and removing them instead of constructing the improvements. We obtained appraisals of the homes, and both property owners immediately agreed to sell their homes for the appraised values. However, both of the properties were subject to the covenants of the East Eden Homeowners Association. Removing the homes would require approval of the HOA, and they would not grant that request without compensation for the lost income that would be associated with those properties being removed. To reach a settlement agreement with the HOA, we obtained an appraisal or a cash flow analysis to establish that value for the covenant release. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any question, Mr. McPhee, on this item?
Roland, that $50,000, explain to where that, that number came up with for me, please, sir?
Yes, sir. That $50,000 was a cash flow appraisal for the properties at 1238 and 1240. So, what that did was that projected the costs of their monthly fees for HOA taxes and monthly fees for HOA maintenance fees, less the expenses associated with those properties. The valuation, I'm sorry?
How long is that for? I mean, how many years did you back to predict that?
So, the life of the HOA and improvements was estimated to be 65 years. They have been in existence for approximately 35 years, so the, the difference in that amount was 30 years, so this is based on a 30-year term.
So, basically, we're taking, we're buying two pieces of property, we're taking it off the tax roll, we're going to be responsible for the upkeep and maintenance of that property, and then we are paying the neighbors in the other three duplexes that, that are beside it to upkeep theirs for the next 30 years.
Yes, sir.
Is, is, is that legal? Mr. Finley, is that legal?
I believe it is.
We've got a, a private group basically trying to tax the city, I guess, the way it sounds to me.
I believe what, what, the proposal is a, would, would pass the legal muster. Presented by Roland.
I, I don't know, I just have a problem with us paying them the $50,000. I don't have a problem buying the property, but we're losing both ways. We're taking it off the tax roll, we're buying it, we're taking it off the tax roll, then we've got to pay to demolish it, and then we turn around and give those three duplexes their $50,000 to upkeep their property for the next 30 years, and, you know, we're losing all the way around on this deal.
As we would if we had to try to fix it as well, Steve. Either way, we're going to lose. This is just the lesser of the two losses.
Well, I, I understand that, Doc, but we're setting the precedent.
Well, what do we want to do? You want to dig your heels in the ground and say, okay, we're going to make the drainage worse, we're going to improve the property and then have the, the other houses flood, and then we have, then we have Ford back? I, I mean, it's a bad situation, no, there's no good way around it, but I don't know of any other way. Roland has done what they can to negotiate this, and if, if, if we had a better plan, I think we'd probably present it.
Yeah.
I, I, I will interject one thing, Mr. Pirtle. I, I couldn't agree with your, your interpretation or understanding of that. You know, if you'd noticed in my prepared remarks, I talked about the property owners were ready and willing, but with the HOA not releasing them from those covenants, it doesn't matter whether they're, they're satisfied with the solution or not. That it's really the, the HOA's restrictions that prevent us from moving forward on this.
Well, the problem I have is I have a piece of property in an area of town that isn't, it's in an HOA, and I don't pay near that kind of money every year for it, believe me, and it's in a nice residential neighborhood, but I, driving by there, I can't see that, I just can't see that. I mean, it's just, I don't know.
Yes, sir.
I don't know. It just doesn't look right to me.
I have a question. Mr. McPhee?
Yes, sir.
Do we have, do we have a history of this happening before, where, I'm sorry, this is Ray Wade, District Three. Do you have a history of this happening before, because it does seem kind of, kind of a strange arrangement to compensate the HOA?
No, sir, we have, we have not encountered an issue with an HOA in our, in our drainage improvements projects. Most of the time, we have, where, where the improvements were more expensive than the, or where the project was more improvement than the, than the improvements, we've been able to negotiate just that as an arms-length transaction between the property owner and the city. This is the first time we have run into a situation that the property owners did not have full control of the property in which they owned.
But what if it was a private citizen went in and purchased this property and decided to demolish it for the land? Could that HOA take them to court and sue them for the loss revenue as well?
I would, I would defer to the, Mr. Finley, but I, I, I believe the covenants, the way the covenants in my review of them, in my engineer review of them, if you will, it basically said if, if properties aren't upkept, they have the right to fix it and charge you back, so if someone did that, I would imagine they could force you to reconstruct what you took down, because they have explicit descriptions about what type of improvements are to be allowed on the property or required on the property.
So, Mr. McPhee, is the HOA not open for negotiation? Is that it? The $50,000 is the flat fee that they're requesting?
Yes, ma'am. We, we, we did not know the appropriate value, that's obviously what they told us initially, so we hired an independent appraiser to see, because we were reticent to take that forward because of that amount as well, and when the appraisal came back, that reflected that we, we believe that to be the appropriate value. That's, that's the best information I have available to determine a value for that release.
Thanks, Roland. This is Kristen. I just wanted to comment that we've, in District Four, had, I feel like, a large number of drainage issues, and I appreciate the city's willingness to take care of them. It benefits the city, it also benefits the homeowner, who's in a bad situation there as well, and of course, I have not legally reviewed anything with the HOA, but I would agree with Roland's statement, we're dealing with something that a private purchaser would also be dealing with, and don't really have a lot of recourse in handling that, except for reaching a settlement and moving forward. So, I appreciate the work on your part, Roland, and look forward to getting that taken care of on behalf of the city.
Ignore the questions or discussion, is there a motion?
This is Kristen again. I make a motion to approve the item.
Ed Moore, second.
Okay, we'll have a roll call vote. There's been a first and a second. Mr. Moore, District One?
Yes.
Nona Snoddy, District Two?
Yes.
Ray Wade, District Three?
Yes.
Chris Ishihara, District Four?
Yes.
David Wright, District Five?
Yes.
Steve Pirtle, District Six?
Yes.
And I, Andy Mack, Mayor? Yes. Ms. Secretary, would you please confirm the record of the vote?
Yes. Kristen Ishihara made the motion, was seconded by Ed Moore. Motion passes 7-0.
We'll move on to Act Item B. Thank you, Ms. Secretary. I want, once again, thank you, counsel, for bringing discussion about things like this, because it's important, but I also want to thank you, Mr. McPhee, for doing your homework and being prepared, and doing all that we can do to alleviate and eliminate problems in, in our community as far as drainage goes. Sometimes it's just a rock and a hard place, and we sometimes have to swallow hard, but, you know, I think we're doing the right thing to keep progress going and not create bigger problems by trying to solve smaller problems, so thank you very much. Act Item B, through the resolution awarding a contract authorizing director of city manager to necessary, necessary documents on case Sloan Construction on the Arboretum. Mr. Karen?
Good evening, Mayor. City Council, Mr. Bonds. Decided is to consider resolution awarding the contract for Phase Two of the Arboretum. As you recall, Phase One opened in November of 2019. The total project was a little over $2.5 million, and included $1 million of bond funding that voters approved in November of 2018. So, Phase Two, next slide, would then allow for the additional, or the remaining bond funds to be utilized, though that, those items would be additional parking on city property located along Cotton Street, three pergolas that could be utilized for small or larger groups, and a west entry ticket booth to be utilized for special events along the mod, mod cob side of the, the property. The bids were open on April 23rd, there were six total bids received, and staff is recommending awarding the contract to Casey Sloan Construction LLC in the amount of $358,000.
Counsel, have any questions, Mr. Karen?
Mr. Karen, this is Dave Wright. I was just wondering, where is that parking located that we'd be working, that'd be worked on?
Yes, sir. It's just to the east of the existing entry drive for the, the 706 Cotton Street property. So, that is, from, from that point, where the parking lot is, east all the way to Grace Creek is city-owned property and drainage.
Okay, all right.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we approve.
Mr. Pirtle, make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
David Wright, seconds. I'll have a roll call for a vote. Mr. Moore, District One?
Yes.
Ms. Snoddy, District Two?
Yes.
Mr. Wade, District Three?
Yes.
Ms. Ishihara, District Four?
Yes.
Mr. Wright, District Five?
Yes.
Mr. Pirtle, District Six?
Yes.
And I'm Mayor Andy Mack, vote yes. Ms. Secretary, would you please confirm the record of the vote?
Yes. Motion was made by Steve Pirtle, seconded by David Wright. Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. Will now consider Act Item C, and by the way, Mr. Karen, looking forward to that project continuing forward, nothing but good coming of that so far, hope that continues in that way. We appreciate all of your efforts in that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Will not consider resolution rejecting all bids for the 2020 chip seal program. Mr. McPhee?
Good evening again, Mayor. City Council, Mr. Bonds. Tonight, I ask you to consider approval of a resolution rejecting all bids for the 2020 chip seal project. We received an open three bids on March 17th, 2020, the lowest of which was $1,199,353. We've delayed action on this item so we could develop projections for our end-of-year revenues and expenses based upon the COVID-19 pandemic. Early revenue projections indicate the general fund could be down by as much as $4.6 million. In an effort to offset the revenue reductions, each department prepared proposals for reductions in service to cover the revenue shortfall. Collectively, a total of $5.6 million was identified as potential expenditure deferrals. I'd like to draw your attention to the fact that 27% of those cuts that were proposed or deferrals came from deferred maintenance of structures, which included the funding for this chip seal project, and I had proposed this project as part of that. In the past, deferring street maintenance has been a successful strategy, and funding has been restored when it became available. However, depending upon our revenue situation, that is not necessarily guaranteed. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. McPhee, first of all, I want to say thank you once again, as, as we, as I mentioned earlier, counsel, we've been discussing ways that we're going to handle our general fund deficit that we know is going to take place, we just don't know what the total cost that deficit will be, but I appreciate every department identifying areas that we can cut and tighten our belts. It's not the first time we've had to tighten our belt. Five years ago, we ran a situation very similar with decreased sales tax revenues, and we found a way to make it work, and we'll do the same thing again this year, so I appreciate all the efforts being put forth by city staff. Any discussion on this item for Dr. Mc, with Mr. McPhee?
Mayor Ed Moore, if I could make a few comments?
Sir.
Generally, I'm opposed to putting off scheduled maintenance, especially for streets. It just puts us a year or more behind schedule. I visited with the city manager earlier this week about maybe doing half of week about maybe doing half of the projects instead of the, the full 1.2 million. I found out then, in order to do that, we would have to start all over and re-vet the entire project. And at this late date, that's just not practical. Mr. Bonds did make a suggestion that as we go through the budget process, I would like us as council to consider, if, if we end the year, and granted, it's a big if, but if we end the year better off financially than we currently anticipate, we could encumber all or part of this year's unspent proceeds and roll it forward into next year, and then could possibly undertake a larger project in summer of 2021. And so we're not so far behind. I, I agree, we need to cut this expense now, but hopefully, we can make up for it next year. So, anyway, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion for Mr. McPhee?
I, I just have, I just have some concerns about putting it off. I mean, I know we've got to, but are we making it twice as hard on us next year? I mean, you know, it, it just seems like when we put off maintenance that we, we have to double up to next year, and that means we have to start playing catch-up. And I know, Mayor, I wasn't here at the time when they did it the first time. Not sure how that process actually went, but I know that we, that we came out of it, and we have over the last few years. But, you know, the roads, this is a vital part of keeping everything up and running. And, and, you know, we can drive all over these subdivisions and see all this stuff going on, and it really needs to be done. But I just hope that we're not getting behind, behind too far on this.
I think we all agree with that statement, Mr. Pertle, and we all wish we didn't have to do any cutting, but that's not a reality. We're going to have to cut somewhere, and we have to start making those plans now. And I think the way it worked last time, we, we deferred maintenance, and we were able to catch up very quickly. And I think, I'm hoping we'll be able to do the same thing this time, but we don't know that. But we just got through saying, we're not going to raise taxes. That means we have to cut services in some form or fashion. And this is one of those things that I think we can do feasibly and still make it up in the end. And I trust Mr. McPhee's judgment on this, because he's, this is not his first time to do this as well. And I appreciate him having been here before, and as well as Mr. Bonds, who was in discussions earlier. And I think this is a good way to start, and this is not the first time we have to mention an item like this in the next few months, some things we're going to have to cut. So we have to start somewhere.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have a question for, for Mr. Bonds. Mr. Bonds, is there any potential that we'll be getting any state money this year that could make up for the shortfall, or help with the shortfall, so that we could consider doing this, instead of just waiting for another year?
We're not aware of any CARES money that would be eligible for this expense. The CARES Act does provide quite a bit of funding to the city, but it's only for COVID-19 expenses, so this wouldn't qualify.
Okay, thank you.
Is no other discussion? Is there a motion?
Ed Moore moved to approve.
Second.
Who was that, Steve Pertle?
Yes.
Mr. Pertle, second. I'll go through, roll call vote. Mr. Moore, District One?
Yes.
Ms. Snoddy, District Two?
Yes.
Mr. Wade, District Three?
Yes.
Chris Ishihara, District Four?
Yes.
Mr. Wright, District Five?
Yes.
Mr. Pertle, District Six?
Yes.
And I, Andy Mack, Mayor, vote yes as well. Ms. Secretary, would you please confirm the record of the vote?
Yes, sir. Motion was made by Councilmember Ed Moore, seconded by Steve Pertle. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, counsel. We'll have a quick update on our COVID-19. As you know, we've been working hard to make sure you have been the best, have the best and most timely information about the state of our community of COVID-19, and keeping our city website page up to date at longviewtexas.gov/coronavirus, daily case reports on my Facebook page. In recent days, as citizens have begun to follow Governor Greg Abbott's instructions on how to open up Texas safely, we have seen an increase in cases here in Longview. Monday, May 11th, we saw the most new confirmed positive cases in a single day since this has begun, and the number of confirmed recoveries isn't growing as quickly. Unfortunately, today, we had our worst day ever. We have 28, 28 new cases today and zero recoveries. We're still at two deaths, but we have 28 new cases today and zero recovery. So, citizens, here's the thing. It's up to you. It's up to you to keep social distancing when you're out and about. It's up to you to wear your face covering to help protect others in case you have it or are asymptomatic. It's up to you to be selective in stores that you visit, how long you shop. We need to take a personal responsibility of our own actions so we can continue to keep ourselves and neighbors safe, that we can get our economy moving again, and ultimately, we can find a new normal. This is difficult for all of us, but I worry that these numbers are continuing to rise, and I know they're going to continue to rise because of the advanced testing and the more testing that we're doing. We had 300 and some odd tests on our mobile testing site in the last couple of days. So we're going to get more positives. But we need to do our best to protect those that are most vulnerable and to protect ourselves from the unknown, because it is an unknown virus. So don't forget, you can find all the news about the coronavirus in Longview at longviewtexas.gov/coronavirus. City staff are keeping it up to date, resources, and all the local information you need to know about how it's affecting the city. Most of the offices are open again, but please use good hygiene habits for visiting a public facility, and if possible, conduct your business by phone or online by visiting longviewtexas.gov/online. I appreciate all of y'all being here. I know this is difficult to do with this teleconferencing. I know it's hard on the citizens as well. I hope it will be before you soon again, but until we are, we'll keep safe and put it in God's hands. So we are adjourned. Thank you.